Call me in order to stand and say the flag. A little bit till people get in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have all of the members of the board of directors who we do have at the forum? And let's take a look at our agenda. Are there any additions or corrections that you know of to the clerk? All right, looking down through the agenda, do you have any additions or corrections?
I would approve as presented the agenda.
Well, I would like to say something if you don't tell. An objection right now was on the motion. I would take, like to take, let's see, which one is it?
Eleven.
Eleven? Okay, eleven. I would like to move to remove number 11 from the agenda for a second.
Second.
Second, and you did so.
I'd like to know why you want to take that off.
Because I would, I'm going to tell you right now, I think our policy is fair for everyone, and I don't see any reason for the council to be involved with it yet. Do you?
That's just my question.
Okay. Any other further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. So would you remove number 11 from the agenda? We'll look at it again. Is there any further additions or corrections? I will tell you that number 15 is going to be, I will be voting against that because, again, I do not vote for something to sponsor a good benefit because I do do those personally, and I don't think I need to spend my tax dollar money for that in order to get this done. So I'd like to let you know that right now. So that's the only other one I'm maybe concerned about being on our agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
I approve.
By Jerry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chris, was it, for you, Tom? Chris. And so, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Our consent agenda, is there any item that you'd like to check for further discussion or question before we vote?
Jake Herka, that's the guy who put fiber optics in.
Correct, AT&amp;T contract going from Hill to the tower on 56.
Do you have anything to add on those? August financials approved. Okay. Dick America, did you give us some background on Dick America?
That's what was just answered.
Oh, excuse me.
Yeah, they're contractors for AT&amp;T putting in fiber optics from the AT&amp;T building to the tower.
All right.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Have you seen Ms. Saunders in the, our audience?
Are you, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, I'll do the first half then. Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. The first item I have for your consideration tonight is approval of a bill from EDH, which will be paid through KDHNE funds in the amount of $6,465.
Questions? Motion for approval?
Approved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We approve this paydown. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, four copies with the mayor's signature. Also, I have the semi-annual report for the mayor's signature. It is just part of the paperwork of the loan agreement. Not necessarily we need a motion. It is required to be filed twice a year during the construction on the project. It's April and October. And since I was here today, I went ahead and prepared it. So we will be submitting the report in advance to the October 12th. Octo-, yeah, October 12th deadline. So that's the other form that I have for the mayor's signature there. And all it does is, it's a summary report that says we have gone to bids, we've awarded it, and whether or not there are any minority within the business enterprises involved on the project in the dollar amount. So it's just a summary report to KDHNE.
So that does not need a motion?
It doesn't need a motion unless council so wishes.
Do I want to say it before I sign?
And I will put my other hat on.
Okay. I guess we're ready for you again.
Okay. Second half. As city's financial advisors, we have worked with Doug and Angela Darren, and of course, under your authority to go ahead and put together a bid package that covers the street improvement projects. That is the 2013 grant award that the city received from CDVG, the local amount, plus doing the work at Fort and Williams. So based on that information, in front of you, you have this packet that has the timetable of events on it. This morning at 11 o'clock, we received five bids from underwriters and banks that we do business with, ranging from Commerce Bank, although, which also includes, we've seen a bid from Marion National Bank. Average net interest rates range from 3.1869 to 3.4151. And based on the information, we are going to recommend that the city execute a bid form agreement with Commerce Bank to issue bonds on the street project. So we have ordinance number 1362. And I apologize, do they even have the draft form of this?
Yes, I do.
Okay. That ordinance authorizes in providing for the issuance of general obligation bond series 2013 of the city of Marion, Kansas, providing for the levying collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying for the principal and interest of on said bonds as they become due, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith, and making certain covenants with respect thereof. That is the ordinance that you need to-
For amounts of?
One million. The major trafficways project was for $1,122,656, of which $400,000 of that was CDVG. So it would be a non-to-exceed general obligation bond cost of $895. And based on the bids that were received last night, we are under that bond issue amount.
Any questions before we approve or disapprove? Action?
Remove to approve ordinance 1362.
My second.
So with everything that she said up there in that paragraph, yeah, that in there, then is, Angela?
I will insert that in the beginning of the minutes, and then I can just do the motion.
Any further discussion?
This information here that you gave us is that this ordinance approves this.
Commerce Bank.
Any further questions? If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, and then we have resolution number 13 dash 10.
Eleven.
Eleven, thank you. And that is a resolution prescribing the form and details of and authorizing and directing the sale and delivery of general obligation bond series 2013 of the city of Marion, Kansas, previously authorized by ordinance number 1362 of the issuer, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith.
Questions before we take action? This will get this all done, correct?
Certainly hope so.
Motion for approval?
Move to approve resolution 13 dash 11.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, and second, we'll do the same thing for this, but correct? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
There are a number of pages to sign, Madam Mayor, if you want to do them.
I will just continue to do them now.
Okay. I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention.
I asked Dan to deliver more than 60.
Okay, this is starting to clear. Well, the mayor is signing this, I neglected to tell council that on September the 24th, 20M Thurman from the Department of Commerce will be here to look over the CDVG files, to make sure we're in compliance. I have no problem believing that we are. So if any of council is so available and wants to stop by and meet Ms. Thurman while she's here working on files, you're more than welcome.
You would say that she's an auditor?
She's the field representative on the sewer project from the state of Kansas, from the Department of Commerce. We worked with her on both the street project on Cedar and Eisenhower, and then when we did the waterline project in the southeast part of the city.
Was that again, September?
September the 24th, and she should be here about 10 o'clock in the morning. Yes, ma'am. And there's another stuff. They monitor? Were there any more forms over there, Angela, that require the mayor's signature?
I just grabbed the resolution. She's going to get them there, and we'll get those forms to you. Yeah, I know. It's just like saying that a mortgage on your house.
Okay. As you saw on your sheet, we should have funds delivered to the city on October the 1st. So whenever the contractor begins work on the project, the council will be there to look for to pay up. The street, the new, yeah. Yeah, I won't be involved in, on the drawdown of the loan amount since money will be delivered to the city. I believe that's all the paperwork, thank you very much.
Glad to get this started. Okay, there's that group. We'll guess who's up next.
Okay, first item I have on the agenda is the approval of the CDVG street bid. And this was the larger, the two projects we put out for bid. So this includes, like Freeborn, the street right out here in City Hall, from the City Hall. Basically, it's everything we bid out except for it was on the CDVG project.
And Freeborn.
Freeborn's on this one. Yeah, it's Freeborn, all the way from the south side of the hospital to Is- Lawrence.
And that's the biggest project that-
That's the biggest chunk of the project, is all of that. But it also includes Tanglewood, Nickerson, Thorpe, a little bit of Thorpe. Yeah, an intersection on Maple, some intersections around town, including Thorpe and Cobble by the grade school. It included a lot of different various spots in town. So the first item, we had five bidders on both projects. And on your bid tabs, you will see the names of the five bidders that were, that actually bid the project. And what we'd like to recommend at this point, because we did receive such good bids-
This is the first one you're talking about?
That's correct, yes. We would like to actually, the base bid was actually a cut-down area version. At alternate one was all of the exact same streets as the base bid, only the full entire street. So we didn't have to take anything out within the street. So they were really a base bid, and at alternate one were the same areas, the same streets, just more of them on at alternate one. So what we are doing tonight is we are recommending that you accept at alternate one from, from Boots Parka in the amount of $715,780. Then we are also recommending as part of that motion, you accept an award at alternate two in the amount of $123,735 to Boots Parka. At alternate two actually then is Thorpe from Main Street to the bowling alley, and about three other intersections around town, some other valley gutters and some other intersections down on the south end of Cedar. I remember working on more and more, is that the Maple one was on it?
Three intersections and-
Three intersections and one block at Thorpe. So we have enough money under the bonds, they give us good enough bid prices that we can actually award both. And in fact, you need to award both to capture the full CDVG amount of 400,000 because we have to be over 800,000 to get a one-for-one match. So with the 715, we need the 121 also to get that whole entire grant amount.
Now, I didn't use a calculator, you don't know what the calculated balance was.
For the two of those, it is going to be 836,515 combined.
Questions before we?
Boots Parka is out of Newton. They have done, well, of the big projects that happened over Hillborough in the last 18 months, they did, they did one of the three big projects. They work a lot in the Newton area. They also work like Burton, Halsted, Onit, New Person. And they work for a lot of, Newton's the biggest place they work for. They really don't do a lot of work taking in Wichita, or they try to stay away from that. The foreman, actually, that's out on the job site, is one of the owners in this case. So they're very hands-on. They do very good finished work, and they actually work well with the city and engineer in making sure of paint jobs.
And I go so-
They're very conscious about their work.
In the past, they are very good. And they are more than aware of CDVG rules and regulations.
Other further questions?
Yeah, it's my total is 836,515. Eight three six, five one five.
Do I have a motion for approval?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the Boots Parka. Fault one and fault two. Bid proposal for the total amount of $836,515.
Do I need anything added to that?
Second.
Second by Jerry. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Next item on the agenda we have is the bid approval for Fort and Williams. This was a, this project on the contractor side is just to do the surface work. In other words, this is a city removal, county base prep. Contractor will come in, do the fine finish grading, and put concrete down. So that, that's what this bid is actually for. Once again, we have the same, or relatively the same five bidders. There's only one difference in name between the two sets of bidders. This one, we are recommending, once again, to the low bid, to HEC Construction here at Marion, in the amount of $147,893.
It looks like localization is a really good factor in that.
And one of them, yes.
And, okay, now-
This includes everything from the library, library street, all the way up to Main Street where we're stopping the middle overlay, and then Fort, or Williams, from Fort over to, or third, I mean, third.
How about the parking lot that is, it's, area in front of the-
New library addition is not currently included in this. However, because it's, this is one thing we will, we can bring back to you as a change order because you do have some additional bond money available, not CDVG, just on the other project. We could extend those quantities on, to have that covered. And since it's contiguous with the other existing projects, then that we could actually do that under bond rules.
Okay, because that was a-
That is an item that we are, we have the quantities on already, but we can, since that's a full new facility down there as far as the area of parking, we can adjust that area also to meet whatever needs of the library and the finished dollars and everything else. So we will bring that back to this, to the council as a potential change order at some point here in the future, the next couple of months, to get those details ironed out before Davey could even start.
Yeah, because I think there's been some misunderstanding around town as to what's going to happen to the loss on the parking lot. You know, if the concrete, or whether it's going to be rock. You're going to, you're saying-
The original plan, the original plan still is, it's set right now today, is rock.
Rock, so-
Because if we had not received good bid prices on these, you would not have any extra bond availability, and we would be looking for money somewhere else in the budget if you wanted to pay it.
All right, so this is-
But now that we have a little bit of money, we will, we will get a price for that and see how we can make it work.
Good.
But for clarification, this is not new fraud?
Not yet.
Not yet?
That's correct. Under the current bid, nothing of that new parking lot for the library expansion is included.
Okay, you're going to see if we have the money.
Furthermore, there's no guarantee that bond council will approve the use of excess funds for that project, so we set it completely off the table for now. But normally, since it's contiguous with the existing project, bond council will, should go ahead and approve that. Or we, you have to run it through all their, to make sure all the work you, works for them. So that you don't get the change out of it.
All right, I also had someone wondering about the parking on the north side of the courthouse. And maybe this is a question I didn't get to you, Tyler. They were asking, the senior citizens across the street were asking if there could be some more handicap parking, but over there on the north side, since the elevator was over here on the north side of the courthouse. And I said, well, let's not even bring that up until we get to the Williams Street's project. So do you, do you see if there needs to be handicap parking?
You talking about on the, sheriff's, are the counties parking over there?
On the north side of the-
Parking on the north side.
The north side of the, on the-
That's county property, not a government.
Well, this current project doesn't replace any of the, right now, there's brick and there's concrete.
Right.
Okay? This project replaces none of the concrete.
Right, and so could, if that explained to the senior citizens, could this happen?
The issue with putting in an ADA ramp on that size is there's no, there's no access up to the level that gets them to the elevator level from the north side.
That's on the south side.
Right, there's stairs on the north side. So even if we made an ADA ramp onto the sidewalk, the sidewalk leads to non-ADA accessibility. So you're actually creating more of a problem for yourself as a city unless you want to do much more work. And then it's really county facility, so it's really the counties.
Their parking is their parking, not city parking.
They, they have to have so many spots for their facility to meet ADA.
Well, they were talking about closer to the elevator park. You know, I said, that seems to be closer for them to get to the elevator than either. And I said, that, that might be his problem.
No, it's not Tyler's. It's, it's really, it's really the facility's problem, no matter who the owner is.
Okay, but does he look at to see whether they have enough or do-
No, that's actually, it's actually code enforcement.
Oh, okay.
That's one, that's one code, it's not Tyler's.
Maybe you could explain it to him. Thank you.
No problem, yes.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve HEC Construction for the Fort and Williams bid project at $147,893. $147,893.
Does anyone have a second? Any further questions?
You had a question about, when we first started talking about a walkway across that.
Oh, yeah. That was supposed to be a nice walkway across there, remember?
Supposed to be a nice walkway across where?
Well, on the about-
Fourth Street.
Fourth and going across there. You know, step just plain concrete, there's supposed to be something that looks like bricks, you know, in the concrete.
We had plans to do that up, at least since we've been involved, we had plans to do that up on Main Street. But I, when we got involved on the Fort and Williams, I don't remember anything being- And it's not to say that we can't go ask for something to be done to put that in. I mean, I could talk to Davey about, in that particular case, if we wouldn't want something decorative, probably the best option than he has, a stencil, is actually use the stencil brick look. We just have to stain it then, so it look like brick.
Because that was in one of the meetings that the county.
Yeah, I, I, I wasn't in that meeting, so I'm not sure. Are you, was it straight across from the new jail door?
Yes.
Okay, so halfway down Fourth Street between Williams and Library. It could be added. Without a doubt, we can, anything can be added in at this point. I'm sure there will be additional costs because that's not a straight paving, but we could look at it as an option.
Well, I knew he had asked about that, so I better remind him. He won't ask about it again. Got it? Okay, there's motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All who's in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, motion verified as equals. Did you give the whole, what you needed for that?
Madam Mayor, before he gets to the next of the airport deal, I'd like to make a comment about, I saw that young engineer on that job all the time and I appreciate that. And I don't know if you made him or not, Darren, but I.
Well, it's either me getting hit by traffic or him, so.
But he acted like he knew what he was doing.
You know, that, that's the training of Kansas State University. You always look like you know what you.
I think you're not in the middle of the road every Thursday, but on Saturday. So like, it was nice to see somebody.
Quite honestly, one of the things that we always try to do is we're involved heavily on the construction side because that's where it's, the battles won and lost with the public. And when a contractor is not fully equipped to do what we really want them to do, or really think they should be doing, we step in and help out if needed, so.
And it happens.
It does. It does. Sometimes, as fast as, as fast as that milling process moved, they didn't have enough people to keep up with moving the traffic control, so we stepped in and helped out. And we actually, there was one day where it was actually three of us out there helping. Pretty remediation, so.
I thought they were supposed to go halfway through to Walmart.
They did.
They stopped right before, right where they were stationed.
They went halfway between First and Walmart.
Yes, because it's in front of.
It's right, almost, it's not to Arley's Door. It's just shy of Arley's Door. And that's halfway between First and Walmart.
Oh, I see.
Darren, have you talked to the pros?
I was thinking it was halfway to the intersection of Walmart and Main. Which would be about another thirty feet west. But you're saying half the block.
Half the block. Half the block between First and Walmart. Because what we give is the, the rest of that up to that point is actually on the geometric improvement application that KODA still has not ever funded or awarded. And that goes from that point where we stopped all the way to the railroad tracks. That's, that's a separate project that they just never awarded and never funded yet, so at some point in the future, that will be done up to where we stopped this time. Or worst case, we apply for another clink and we can go ahead and mill an overlay. And actually, it's not a bad idea to start thinking about applying for an out here, you know, three or four years down the road, clink to go ahead and mill an overlay all the way to the bridge. Because in another four or five years, that pavement will look about like what downtown did. Now, the nice thing is, everything we've built so far has been in really good condition already. We haven't found any kind of problems that caused us to do any kind of change work at this point. The brick is in very good shape. I was very impressed. I mean, I, I expected to see spots where the brick had to come out and pass for patching or other stuff, but it's, it's all pretty good shape. And the overlay has stayed bonded to the brick that we didn't mill. Sometimes that happens where, well, you see patches where work's come off. And that's okay, and patches, we've seen them a whole time. It happens, it's suffering.
I have a question for you tomorrow, maybe you can still.
If you can find me or Andrew, you may ask.
I'll do.
Okay, we'll hire you tomorrow. Tomorrow's Mobile Office Day. Yes, ma'am. And we'll get back to you on pricing then. The next item I have on the agenda is actually KODA Aviation Grant Application. This stems from when the airport board had come, oh geez, when was that? March, April? It was about the time the ax sprayers were, a lot of them were here, so that would have been right at the end of April, first, March, May. And expanding the apron. What we've done with this grant application, KODA Aviation accepts these grants, this is a ninety-ten cost share, so they pay ninety percent of all construction, construction engineering, however, not into the design engineering. So what we've tried to do is whenever we get involved with these grant applications, we try to defer to design engineering cost as little as possible since that's a hundred percent on you. And then there are some cases where we can shift some of the costing to the construction engineering side. And so that's why you'll see it not exceed on it a little bit higher. What this grant application does is it is going to ask KODA to participate in constructing a new apron, slightly bigger than the one that's out there now. You see on the cover, the application we sent you, it's just a picture of the airport itself as it sits right now. And then about three pages back in the application, you'll see kind of an, there's a bits in black and white and I think it's a little harder to see. But we do, we are showing another apron in there. It's about a third bigger than the apron that's out there now. We're mirroring it though to the north of the existing taxiway. And it will tie into the existing taxiway that's for the T-hanger, or, yeah, for the T-hangers, for the hangers that are out there, just like the other one does. So what it would roughly do is provide at least another four or five spots of the ax sprayers with trucks. And if you're just talking single-engine aircraft, probably another eight or nine. Really parking places for single-engine aircraft. And then we're also, as part of the application, we're turning into, they go ahead and tie it to the runway on the very north end of this new apron. So that they have another way to get out right to the runway, so.
Now, if you were to get this in, and I would, would you hear from this particular?
What, the application deadline is September thirtieth, usually around the first of the middle of December, they announce the grant recipients. And then actually, the KODA funding is actually twenty fifteen state FY twenty fifteen money, which doesn't become available until July first of twenty fifteen. There are multiple ways to go about the project. Once you are awarded it, once they say, yes, you're going to get the grant money, you have the option to then, next spring, we could build this. And if you had the funds yourself to go ahead and do that, then come July first, we can ask for reimbursement for all of the, their ninety percent. Or you can actually wait until your calendar year twenty fifteen, because that's probably what's going to fit in your budget the best. And actually not even construct, we could have the design done and get ready to bid it out, so that come January of twenty fifteen, you can actually lock in a contractor, because then it fits within your budget authority. And then construct it in the spring of twenty fifteen, get reimbursed for it as we construct.
And so our, our extra cost would be the thirty-eight thousand?
That is, right now, when we ever return in a grant application, if you remember how we as, as EVH do it, we always make sure numbers are conservative. So in other words, what I, what you're seeing there is the grant application, we're saying this totally, that everything included on this project that we ask for the ninety percent back on would be two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. Now, if we were to bid that out and got the same prices as what we just approved on these other projects, you're looking at that number instead of being two hundred and eighty-nine, being two hundred and three. So you can see I'm a third high on my estimate at this point on that grant application. We don't know what bid prices are going to do a year to eighteen months down the road. So we try to keep it on the higher side. But right now, with what you see on paper, yeah, the city's cost share would be right, right under thirty-nine thousand. However, I think we can get it for closer to a third. Seeing the bid prices that we are seeing right now, if those translate out another year, we can see it for around thirty thousand. For your total cost.
Now that, even if it sounds even better, but I still would like to know from the city clerk, maybe, how would we be funding those particulars? Through the rentals or how do we?
We would have to take a look at the budget and probably plan for twenty fifteen budget. We'll have better numbers.
Okay, but where would it come from? Do you think it's going to come in from mostly the rental from that or what?
Some of it will, but I don't know if it will come all of it.
I wouldn't think you'd have all of that, because that goes through bowling and all of that, so you'll have to be trying to think about where it's going to come from.
And, and the other, i- if you apply and actually get awarded it, doesn't mean you necessarily have to commit to it at that time. I mean, you still have an opportunity to back out at a later point in time. You're not committed until KODA actually sends down the grant and you sign the grant. Now, it doesn't look as great if you try to go back a future year since you turned one down. But I'm, I'm saying, or the other option you have is, let's say you've got to the point where you realize in twenty fifteen it wasn't going to, you could actually hold off to your twenty sixteen year. I wouldn't want to push it too much further than that with KODA's money, but twenty sixteen would be still okay in there. They'd like to see you do it in fifteen or even fourteen. But if it just doesn't fit in your budget to be able to do that and you need that extra year to really figure out how you're going to come up with it, then they would find that acceptable.
Other questions before we?
Well, if you send them the application or the, or the grant, there's no guarantee you're going to get the grant.
No. The currently, the KODA Aviation program, going back two years, sort of ten years prior, matching up with the last state highway bill, KODA Aviation was a self-autonomous funded organization. In other words, the Secretary of Transportation could not touch their money. Even though they fell under her, her view at the time, she couldn't touch their money. They got three million dollars a year from the legislature. And it was three million that was spent solely on airports in Kansas. Well, with the highway bill going away and a new one coming on board, they redid the aviation to page two. Now, the good news is they plus them up to ten million dollars a year because they saw the need out there. The bad news is now they can steal from it. So the last two years, they've still ended up with three million dollars. So they've still been funded at the same level they've been funded for the past, well, almost fifteen, sixteen years now. But they have the availability to actually have ten million dollars.
Did we, did we?
It's probably never going to happen, but.
Did we actually lose one that year, kind of proposed for a grant for?
The hangers. Oh, the hangers, right. And, and, and that one is still in the hopper.
It is?
Yeah, actually, even though we applied for it and didn't get it, it's still sitting in their queue up there at KODA Aviation to be looked at for future year funding, unless we tell them to pull it.
Pull it.
It's still there. Now, what happens is the way they score things, because that was hangers, it falls lower on the priority list because the first thing they look at is pavements. Airfield pavements and then apron and taxiway pavements, airfield lighting, you know, all those type of things rank real high on their criteria. Hangers, hangers are down lower. They're kind of that last need, so whenever money left over, they'll look at money. Notice if they ever got the ten million a year, they'd probably fund hangers, so.
Thank you for that information. Any other information before you vote?
I believe I have to.
Is there an action to be taken?
The only action that we need to know is if the council desires to go ahead and go ahead with this application. If you so do, then we need to get it sent in by the thirtieth of September. It has to be to KODA.
So if we have no action, then you'll know.
If you take no action at all, I am still going to be unknowing as to what I'm supposed to do with this.
Oh, you do?
Well, I mean, I, you don't have to decide to vote, but I do need at least a consensus enough of, of what I need to do next.
Okay. Do we have any action to be taken at this time?
I agree that we approved the application.
Is there a, excuse me. Is there a second?
Pledge.
Okay, there's been motion second, we provide for the grant for the Marion Municipal Airport. Is that all we need for that? All right. Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor, I think the discussion is, is when we look down to two thousand fifteen or before to fund this. It is thirty thousand dollars that we do not have a direct revenue stream.
That's right.
From the airport that would cover this. It would take at least ten years from the spring, if they were there for ten years, to cover this cost. But looking to the future, maybe this is not a bad investment for, for the airport. We have other projects in the community that are not self-funded or self-sustaining, so I do recognize that, but. I don't have too many places where we can match or only put ten percent in.
I think the use of this particular has already shown itself to be giving us revenues, so I think we have, so. All who's in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, motion verified as equals.
Okay, do we have someone here in the pride group? Yes, you do. I'm representing the pride group and as you well know, we were unable to acquire the grant that we had applied for for downtown beautification. And with these beautiful streets that are going to be going in, we want everything to look pretty good. So we would like to request, we have talked to a person about doing painting of the poles. They not only are starting to look a little worn and everything, but we'd like to paint them black. And we will provide the money for the paint. If we have talked to a person, a separate entity outside of the city, and the track of labor is approximately three thousand dollars. We need the city's help to do the maintenance work and we would provide the paint for that. I talked to Doug and this could be funded through the street alley department, I assume. We'd like to get your thoughts and approval so we could proceed.
Now, what would be the extent of this particular, where, how long, where are you going to be?
First through fifth.
First through, did you say that?
No.
Oh. I hear that.
No, first through fifth.
First through fifth. Okay. At approximately, how many poles we're talking about?
It's nineteen.
Nineteen?
That's one thing I'm trying to count for sure, is that.
And so we're talking about how long of a project would you say is to take?
Well, I don't know. They'll have to give us a definite estimate of that. We're hoping we could do it fairly soon.
Okay, I understand that you had asked about the city, perhaps even the crew.
We were hoping that.
Okay, so I think there's some people on the council think that there could be that done. Me not being that particular person, but then I want to hear from the city administrator, your thoughts on getting it done.
Our two biggest concerns that the city vehicles are actually insulated for electrical service and they are a higher dollar vehicle because of that. We don't know what any potential spills on insulated, on insulated booms may cause, not necessarily from a safety standpoint, from just a, a look standpoint and a presentation of City of Marion. But more to the point, I haven't fully verified this, but EMC Insurance, there may be some issues regarding us using city equipment. Even though it is our city infrastructure, I think it may be a cleaner and a better relationship to be able to contract that out and let somebody else handle any potential liabilities for spills, paint drippings and damages that may occur during the time that the city would not be opening themselves up to that liability.
In other words, this person, these people would be more or less professional in knowing how to do this, correct?
We're not giving up our grant, but we're still, we're still hoping someday to have it done the right way.
And actually, as far as for the grant purposes, this act, there is going to be another round of grants coming up later this fall. They just have not announced the deadline date. This being done by a local entity, local government, whomever, and we put that, and we add that to the grant application, actually demonstrates one more level of step of, hey, you're serious about trying to maintain your downtown look. So it actually is a plus to go ahead and do this.
And if it doesn't happen, then we're still moving forward.
The original grant application has replaced all of those.
That's correct.
Right, right.
But they could still be two years down the road, so making them black now, it still makes them look.
Oh, yes. We did order new wooden planters, which Marion Auto has one down there. We had spoken for nine and got all of them sold in one day. So we're hoping now to talk to Lucas or somebody here in town to get us more. And so we're excited about that and replace the whiskey barrels that are falling apart.
What was the cost of one or?
Hundred and fifty dollars. They made it, made of redwood. They have a liner, so the wood is not directly in contact with the dirt.
So if you had some private individual that were talking about a hundred and fifty dollars if they.
We've already had some people do it in memory of people and we're good. We've already had some people do it in memory of people and we're gonna get little plaques to put on them.
Sounds like a good deal.
Yes, and then we'll start the flying process of the song for the poles eventually, but one step at a time.
Okay, and further discussion on this? Do we have any action to be taken?
Here we had some money put aside for alley repair. That's gonna come out of that.
We didn't really have any, aware, I'm not aware of any alley repair monies. That aside, this would just fall under our repair maintenance off the infrastructure through street and alley. We also probably, because it's electric poles, we'll actually be looking in our electrical department to see if there's also something within supplies that'd be able to handle this. Between the two departments, it's a very small amount really, so it shouldn't be a problem pulling it out of operating expenditures.
I've asked that same question, it's just going to delay the project, taking those $3,000.
I think the money that you're talking about for alley repairs is actually out of the special highway fund, which is a different fund, so that won't affect it at all.
Whether it was coming out of street and alley, probably they are not?
Um, the alley repairs, we have those coming out of the special highway fund.
Oh, okay. More, is there more discussion? Action?
I move the, uh, supplies of $3,000 for the contractor to paint the light poles.
Is there a second?
Two seconds.
That means by Todd, that was created?
Yeah.
All right, any further discussion? All of them favor, raise your right hand? Opposed?
And I think the city should do it, I want the press to know. I'm not against your project, but I, I think we should do it.
Well, that'd be okay too.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, I think it's nice that we are starting this project, but then, yes, we hope to have that look good on our next grant.
That's right.
Okay. Is there a holder? You're up.
Good evening, council. This evening I'm asking for a motion to designate an assistant building inspector to oversee the city. Currently, we have one full-time building inspector. Because of activities, absence from the city, so forth, this is contributing to delays in getting building permits inspected and/or even issued at a time of need. By having this one individual on city staff that can perform this function, it also leads to a possible perception of conflict of interest as this individual is personally a contractor within our city. So, what the proposal is that we would designate from current staff, individual or individuals to perform the duties of the building inspector in those times that he's not readily available. Beyond designating, and part of it will be, there will be a formalized training program of 12 hours for the individuals that, uh, will be assigned to it. But the intent of that will be to take them through the international building, uh, code. Take them through the national electric and national plumbing codes, so they have the knowledge and expertise to be able to do an in-depth inspection on-site. Before they're actually allowed to go out and represent the city fully, they would complete five inspections under the direct supervision of our current building inspector. So, we'll have that continuity and consistency in all inspections performed in our city.
Questions? I've asked my questions, I think, beforehand, so.
Internal or external training?
Internal training.
Is there any certifications that would go along with this type of position?
In order to actually receive a nicely recognized certification, it requires 100 hours of training that's designated by the state. And currently, our building inspector does not have a nationally recognized certification.
Question? Is this gonna cost us money? 12 hours training, I did.
It may save us some money if we get this done and they are able to do their inspection at a time of need, am I correct on that?
That's correct. I would highly encourage, uh, our current inspector to get certified. Makes it kind of difficult to me to rely on that and then rely on that person to train others. So, having at least one certification, while it's not required, I think would be more appropriate for projects that are happening and need to be approved.
And would said training, 100 hour investment be paid toward by the city?
Something I think that could be negotiated because if they left our employment, that certification would still, still be available. Maybe with, uh, with so many years guaranteed back to the city or city employment, that that could be refunded in such a way that a five-year commitment back to the city after certification would be required or they would have to pay the difference.
We will do the necessary research to put forth a motion in the future, but council would consider this evening would ask for consideration on this designation for current staff.
Do you have anybody mind for a second? Okay, so that would be, if they're willing to accept, then that we would add that to the job duties.
That is correct. And the individuals that we've identified will also facilitate a formalized succession plan for the future of our cities. So, we will be facing retirement and no qualified succession.
So, for the staff, do we need an official-
This is supposed to be yours tomorrow.
Motion for this to allow for other designated voters?
I got a big acquaintance, 'cause you're really adding to job duties of an individual, of an employee.
So, we're modifying a job description, but not knowing who gets it. So, I would expect at the next meeting that we will have whoever these folks are, their job descriptions in front of us for formal approval of, of this requirement.
And the main action is just if the council will approve the formation of this position tonight, and then we will be able to do the job descriptions for those identified individuals at the next meeting.
So, maybe not something that will be added, it'll be separate because if they move on to a different position, they might keep this inspector position.
If we go into that, we might have that as a requirement, I would say we'd have to the days.
Go ahead.
I said we could create a job description that was titled Assistant Building Inspector and designate personnel to that. That way, then in the situation that Todd said, if they move to a different position, they can still take that position with them.
Any other questions before acting? Any question? Yes?
I could only accept Mr. Paul's recommendation for this chapter. We designate another inspector, building inspector.
I like the idea, we would go ahead and have a job description, you can have that. Oh, here we go. I was saving it just for you for three years now.
I appreciate it, but now I've got a whole lot to run.
I'll save it for three more years. Jerry, you wanna put that, they might have to have a job description.
Job description for to make that.
Okay. Does there any second, I'll second. Okay, a move to second, we approve this. Assistant Building Inspector along with having a job description available. Any further discussion? All of them favor, raise your right hand? Opposed? Motion carried five to zero. Thank you. He did, I just figured he would do that anyway, you know, he kinda did.
I just checked you out.
You just gotta think he's gonna be doing that, don't you know?
Yeah, he was on it, so.
I caught you, I caught you.
Okay, let's go on to the next one then.
The next one is, the council, remember, uh, 45 days ago approved a lease for Skywalker's Gymnastics at our 828 location at the time. Say we're leasing 3,000 square feet. Based on the expansion and the increased enrollment, we would like to expand that to the north half of the building. So, it will be going from 3,000 square feet to 5,000. It is the undeveloped side of the building. And it would be a thousand dollars per month is the basic change to the lease agreement that we had with them. Presenting that for approval.
Well, this doesn't make me any difference as to, uh, what, where they are going, but then how, how do they raise their $1,000? Is that distributed fees or what that you, you know?
Yeah, so it actually increases enrollment.
They have.
When he stepped out, took the duty of 35 students, he now has one, excuse me, 50 committed. And he's advertising in the Hillsborough market and appears to have got another 10 to 15 from Hillsborough joining. So, he now has a cash flow to be able to take happily.
Okay, that sounds good too, that's an increase there. Any further questions?
I would, on the lease, it was, was 2,000, it's changed to 5,000, it'll be under sale by one more. They already listed.
Has it only been, uh?
Yeah, it's been, yeah.
Does it, is there a question that we made on this then?
Yeah, we have, so I'll have to just modify, it's under the rent, it's under the rental footage, it's stated there.
Any other questions? Is there motion for approval?
I remember we approved the increase in square footage lease to Skywalker's Gymnastics. Accept the amended rental or lease payment, a thousand dollars per month.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All of them favor, say hi?
Hi.
Opposed? I see I flushed. Motion carried five to zero.
Okay, got you.
Number 14?
During our last big rain event, there was a lot of people that were concerned that the stormwater drains were being plugged up by potential debris that was in the street from lawn mowers blowing grass clippings into the, the street. I think the council had asked about that a couple meetings ago, and so I have researched and we kind of borrowed an ordinance that you will see there. The memo says 1362, it's actually 1363 if it wasn't corrected. The ordinance is for your consideration.
It's on back, down.
The ordinance 1363 is just a suggestion, upon reviewing it and actually having quite a lot of discussion amongst a city county managers listserv, um, I would advise the council to possibly consider this before passing it. An ordinance typically needs to have some sort of teeth in it, which would involve a fine. The questions then come in to who would be fined, at what point would be proof of who was responsible for blowing the grass into the street would need to be proven or established. Do we really wanna take our city court time to go through a series of, uh, small infractions or fine requirements for doing this? I think maybe my suggestion is that, uh, the public in general understand that this is an issue and cooperation would be greatly appreciated so that maybe these, some people might find them a little draconian in enforcement. And if we could have some cooperation in trying to keep, uh, grass in the yard and not in the middle of the street, it would assist us in the future. But this would be the ordinance that would be very similar to this with any modifications the council may require. This is what we would be looking at if you said you wanted some sort of ordinance against, uh, blowing things into the street that would then eventually find its way to the storm sewer system.
Did we, did city crews say we had a problem with those events with, uh?
The-
I think grass clippings is really what we're talking about because in general, we don't see a lot of limbs and brush thrown in the street that would get theirs.
Speaking to the city staff as well as Darren with the engineers, the issue is not necessarily once it goes down the grate. We feel as though especially yard debris, once it's down the grate and in the system, it will go out, it will flush out. The biggest problem is cleaning the grates at the time of the flooding event and keeping them open from any particular accumulation on top of the grates. We do have a crew that goes out when it starts raining and they get their rakes and they rake it out. And there will be a small amount that will always get hung up in the grates. What, was there an inordinate amount of flooding due to the fact that the grates were plugged? I think that'd be very hard for me to say yes to. If, if anything, this is also just kind of a, it sure looks better when you don't have a whole bunch of dead grass in the middle of the street. And there is some plugging that does take an effect, but we go out and we run the grates also. There, this is, this was probably a very popular ordinance approximately 50 years ago. And it seems to have been going out of favor as the time goes by. And you can instruct us how to look at other options. This was just something that was asked by the council, the public was aware of it. There was something on the books at one point, uh, to the best of my knowledge, it was repealed as part of layer action. So, I don't think we have anything on there. The Uniform Public Offense Code does have something for not putting waste, but it's strictly down to sanitary sewer. And so, we don't feel as though a storm sewer would be enforceable through the EPOC. So, I was kind of asked about this, I'm presenting it to the council, this is what would need to be done if you were to approve an ordinance.
Who would enforce this, right?
At this point, the, my suggestion would be who would enforce it would be the police department. Because the police department would be the ones that were out finding it and being able to write citations. If it's decided that is not the case, I don't know what the legal standing we have for our utility supervisor to do it. I, for it to come before city court, it'd have to be a police action.
Well, if, if we ever adopted, like the person has, they have three people that are code enforcers. Which we don't have, I suppose we could appoint somebody else that-
What they do.
Yeah.
Do we have any ordinance about what can or cannot be done to, see, maybe like race oil or something like that?
Or, I'm sure there is.
That's, that's sanitary. I mean, we've got sanitary sewer, sanitary sewer is covered by several different. It, it would be something that, um, I wish our codification was done right now so that we had a legal opinion onto what ordinances had or had not been repealed. Was there something on the books at some point? Yes, by my research to date, it appears as though that ordinance has been repealed or amended at some point so that it'd be very difficult to enforce. If it wasn't and it's still on the books, the fine is no less than $10 and no more than $100. I did find that.
So, I, I think at this time, considering this, we're not even going to be acting on it tonight. Kind of bringing it to our attention that it might be a problem and it gets this word out to the public that- Maybe there would be a reason to turn their mowers around and go the other way and put it back on to your lawn, which is mulching anyway. Excuse me?
You know, it's pretty bad.
It's, well, if they turn it around and go the other way, the mulch, they can use it as mulch. So.
I would also ask the city staff to come up with some type of marketing campaign to get, get this out. We can pass an ordinance and, and the fees aren't enough because you're gonna spend that in, in time just trying to collect that. I, I was hoping we can approach and, and be able to inform our residents that that's not acceptable. The biggest area I see is probably are the, are the leaves and hot the grass. And who are you gonna, who are you gonna get involved to say, well, this leaf blew down for five blocks of the way, so.
Leaves, I believe.
Bag it or tag it.
I, I hope we can go a di- a different route first before we don't, we don't need to waste our police staff time writing ordinance. If there are areas that we have a problem, hopefully we'll put up something on the books that we can say that this is not acceptable. But if we do have chronic problems in certain areas, we address those. I think this is maybe a little overboard at this time.
That being said, let's move on. Is that agreeable?
Okay, that's great.
Okay, let's move on to number fifteen.
On Friday of last week, I was approached by Mrs. Armstrong, who is part of the print, the elementary schools current advisory council. Do you have the information concerning their dam run for education? And they were asking for any donations or sponsorships for the event. And I said that would have to come under council action and I put it in the application and you have it in front of you for consideration.
Anybody have anything to say that want to say that? I think it's a great project, I really do. But again, I'm just gonna say that I would hope that anybody that wants to sponsor this would be getting behind it fully because it is a, well, it's a really worthy thing to get it behind. And so that's one way they can do it. But I would take, take the taxpayers' money and of someone that they didn't tell me to do that. So that being said, I can note that I'll be voting against it. Anyone else wants to say something? Okay.
Mister, well, Mister Police Chief, is your department involved with this run?
No.
As far as, that the city contribution or blocking roads or anything?
It's the dam run.
I think it's all out the lake.
I didn't know whether you guys were.
Not, Steve Hudson's asked me to come out and help before, you know, but.
Whether we're contributing in that fashion.
Being an idea.
Well, there's a five K. Well, I could sponsor Tyler and that'd be the contribution.
I didn't. Having said that, first he could take the call.
Hey, if you're gonna sponsor me, I don't.
Any further discussion? Like that idea. Let's move on then to number sixteen.
On August nineteenth, and you have a memo that states this, this is basically just cleaning up a, an error in the calculation. The contract that was approved for the CDVG Street Project Engineering originally was stated that the amount of the contract was a hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred dollars. When we went back and actually did the calculation, it's actually two hundred and one thousand five hundred dollars. And this isn't asking you to change the contract in any way. This is just allowing me to note the difference of the amount in the minutes so that the auditors will be happy when we do pay engineering if it does happen to get up to that amount.
One zero. Moving it over a little bit. So I don't have a problem with it.
If I could just have a motion.
But by changing it, we do accept this amount, right?
The two hundred and one thousand, if, yeah, it was actually broken out in the contract. And when we added it up, it does come to the two hundred and one thousand five hundred. It was just.
Not to exceed.
I move to. And what's your recommendation for making the change?
Just to move that the minute show the amount of the contract for engineering services on a CDVG Street Project will not exceed two hundred and one thousand five hundred dollars.
That's my motion.
By Jerry? Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion carried five to zero. Department heads, starting with the chief of police tonight.
I have nothing further to report. Unless there are any questions?
Things just start here, are there?
Uh, no. I get in a hurry and Angela's really pressing me for time. She told me that my reports have to be done on Fridays from now on, so I got a little worried. It was Friday when she told me that.
Typing skills is not up to speed either.
The skills are there, it's just the spelling's not. I can type any word you want to.
Yeah.
But if you can read it or not, it's another question.
Any question then for Tyler? Okay, let's move on to Mister Holder.
Nothing for today. I did receive a question from the council regarding why my report ended with promotion of the and then stop. It's because of activities that are not, it is dealing with a grant that will impact our setting, but I can't release the details of it yet.
I tried to get him to spill the beans the other day, staff me, and he wouldn't do it, so.
He wouldn't, that's what I noticed.
Well, I threw key things out, like, do they sell hamburgers? Buns?
Saunder?
Saunder.
Doesn't, doesn't want to take.
He wouldn't do it.
Anything to add to Marty's or Christian's?
I just want to make special note of the staff meeting. We did mix the millings with rock. We feel very confident it's been a good product. Hopefully you can see that we've improved the street, or the park area as well as part of the billings and North Street, I think the report is in there, so. Gallison, not billings, gallison. So hopefully with, I know today we don't have a dust problem. Second of all, the overlay for the paint project, they will come back and try again tomorrow. As long as we don't have mist or, or moisture on the ground, they will continue to black out. So we still anticipate them being done before Art in the Park this weekend.
Now, you did send out an email about the cost of selling of the millings. Do you want to go over that again?
It's pretty simple. The state of Kansas has mandated that municipalities cannot dispose of millings in any way without it being used on municipality streets, alleys, or their uses. So we can't give away, sell, beg, barter, or steal millings. They have to go back on city streets or alleys.
Does that pertain to if we order a street that had brick on it? That's not millings, but if.
The millings, it's really kind of weird because it kind of falls under a mining. That's one of the, kind of how they come from it. And so because the brick wouldn't have a, a process attached to it, I would say no. But that's probably up to some legal interpretation.
I would tend to agree with you.
Because I think the rule has some, you start here and after that. I've been folks asking.
Any other questions for, how about a fall, putting up, is there going to be?
October twenty-first through the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-first?
Through the twenty-fifth.
Okay, and that would be put into the paper, I would assume?
Yes.
On a website? Is there some, is there anything ever put into their bills?
Um, usually the first, the first of the month when she puts it on there, there's just a little comment section that she does put the information in.
And that does bring up on the staff meeting, you also note that we are planning on having the tree dump closed Monday, September twenty-third to September twenty-seventh. So Monday through Friday of the last week of September, we will be closing down the dump to clean up the dump, get it fully ready for this winter's activities. And there will be an alternate place just north of Cottonwood River known as Mem's and it will be identified with a sign showing the thing is dump trees there. So as you go out on Third Street, right before you do the little double curve to get across the bridge, it's that low area on the east side of the road.
Okay, what if we were to have some big storm or something in the meantime? Would that wouldn't have to be opened up again, our record wouldn't have opened up again in order to?
Yeah, any cata, any catastrophic event would nullify these efforts.
That's where the old mulch.
Yes, no, no. No, the mulch goes behind, this is just right off.
But it used to be, there was a mulch over there where they had to call it.
That was farther north, back.
That's by the generator, that lift, but it's not. We're talking right off the road there.
Oh, okay.
That low lying area, right off the road.
Is there a way to get in there easily?
No.
Drive off the road?
Drive off the road. And if it's real muddy, I wouldn't suggest driving.
No, I don't either. Okay. Other question?
In effect, there's only five days. Surely you can leave the tree limbs where they are until we get it back open.
That's what I would be to suggest if maybe we're asking for their cooperation on that.
Put them in the street.
Let me, please pick it up.
Hey, I'm too, I'm too big to crawl through the sewers to investigate that stuff. Clean's job.
Okay, we'll move on then to Angela.
I have nothing to add to my written report.
Angela, I do appreciate what you've been doing there to answer his question about and then did that help to know a little bit about what there's coming into our office. And I'm sure you appreciate when Tiffany gets back with it, correct? Would you like him to come in and answer?
Sure, we'll take all the help we can get.
Do that. We can, we, well, we're sure doing a lot of voluntary people, aren't we? Okay, let's just go on then to Mister Shaleen.
I have nothing to add at this time.
You don't have any good things to report about?
No, just excited to go spend money in the park this weekend.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Okay, that moves us then on to the public forum. Is there anyone in the public forum that would like to speak at this time? If not, we'll move on to number nineteen. But before we move to nineteen, I'm gonna call it a five-minute recess, please. And in that time, I'd like to speak to you, please.
Okay.
Okay. I'll move that, is there any complication for that? All right, guess I should go pick up a five-minute recess now.
You have to work.
One more minute?
I have a bolt that I found.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Check for it.
Actually, it's from something at Moore House, I have a feeling.
I'm getting hungry, I have to work tonight, still.
Another quiet thing I have.
I'm really like my son.
No, I have.
Okay, we come back home. That was, it was, in a recent program, I go to wash my hands at the restroom. We were given notice that the, there was some checking going up that you could get your water check. Your wat, was that anything to do with the city doing that?
Are you referring to the letter you received in the mail today?
No, this was a, I thought there was a call, was it?
I had a phone call the other day.
A phone call?
It's a different.
That's a different thing.
It's nothing to do with the city.
Okay, well, it was.
Outside entity, I raised it.
It was just something that you could do to, you.
Yeah.
Them interested in something, or I was gonna ask about that and I didn't know who it was either. Thank you for explaining that. Water, that's what I figured it was, yet I didn't know, nobody had said anything. Okay, we move back to our regular agenda. And our next item is to accept a resignation of someone that's knocked me on the hump on chair the other day with his resignation. And I think that, I have it here. If not, with the written notice, I resign my position of the city administrator to pursue private business opportunities. Thereby includes take two weeks in notification period, which means my last day of employment before the city of Varium shall be September the twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen. And so he's resigning, so I guess that will not do something.
I move to accept the resignation.
Very second. Second of Jerry. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion carried five to zero. Okay, with that being said, then we're going to have somebody to have to replace him after September the twenty-fifth. And so therefore, we need to have an executive session to, of non-elected personnel to discover, to discuss this particular position. I would move, start with a twenty-one, ten, fifteen minutes.
For me?
Well, fifteen minutes.
That's funny.
Okay, fifteen minutes we'll start with for the six-minute inclusion of the city administrator and the city council. Is there a second?
And you're not including the city attorney?
No, she said she didn't.
I mean, I can, if you need me to.
You want to?
I think she probably should be.
Okay, also include the city attorney. Just ask her. Any, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried five to zero. What would you say?
Or you're claiming your right.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Please. You don't have a peanut allergy.
Say what?
After accepting the resignation of Mister Shaleen and reviewing the calendar and certainly deciding that he would not even be here for our next meeting, I would like to make a couple comments to the press and to the public that I think that during this time that Doug has been serving as our city administrator, we have been able to move out into our utilities and get something done for those things and modify them to tell what if we come into, into the radioactive world or whatever they want to call it, the reading of the meters and become more efficient in that area. And I think that his researching abilities have been service well and his information that he's been giving to us. And with some, a lot of the projects, he's just right on the ball with getting the researches done. And he's also given us to sponsor some projects for the community that I appreciate, that youth, your youth center and with the circles of hope of seeing that where you have done that for us. And I know that's not, it's taken away some of your time, but you've been willing to do that. Been very good and successful for that. You've initiated the staff of doing some things that maybe they didn't want to do, but they've moved to more community, computer-wise world and able to do some of that thing. I think that that's been, going to help us in the near future. So with that said, I would like to wish you all the luck in your private enterprise that you're undertaking. I know that you're happy about doing that because, you know, we've agreed to disagree a long many times, but we have always come to, at the end, we've shaken house, I think. When we've come away with all of our discussions, only this last time I was able to do something else. But there wasn't, wasn't a kiss or anything like that, but we did shake hands in a different way, so. or anything like that, but we did shake hands in a different way, so. He, he likes his space that way. So anyway, he has served us well, and I wish him well. With that being said, we do, we will be having to have a new city administrator down the line, and if, and till we get that, I'm going to appoint Mr. Holter as our interim city administrator to begin on September the twenty-fifth. And I don't know whether we need to have anything further in that or not at this time, do we?
Need a second.
Oh, we need a second, though. But did I need anything further in that?
If you are going to do compensation and you've discussed it.
Okay, I would like to, do you think I should restart that and then go into our execution first?
Okay.
Okay, but you already impressed, you already know who I'm going to be appointing in that regard, so I would like a, to move for a ten-minute executive session with Mr. Holter. And to include you again.
Okay.
And perhaps, can you step in for about three minutes or five minutes? Okay? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, five to zero.